Good afternoon, board members. It is now two twenty-nine, and I will call this briefing meeting to order. It looks like on our agenda, we have two items, both associated with student code of conduct. They're both pre-briefing items, and one having to do with students and the other with adult students. We also have a public comment, board member comments, board attorney comments, and good of the order. So we shall begin with Dr. Atkins, our first code of conduct students pre-briefing.
This time I'll go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Bohatch, who is going to quickly take us through the seventeen eighteen code of conduct pre-briefing. Dr. Bohatch.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Good afternoon, board members. Mr. Martin, first slide. Okay, Code of Conduct Committee, we met on, I believe, four occasions. Represented on the committee were principals, we had district folks, Captain Mike Miller from Lee County Sheriff's Office, and Rob Dodig Esquire attended the meeting. So we had some lively discussion, and there's your committee. Next up. All right, school visits. This is my favorite part of the annual process, is going out and talking to kids. Mr. Demming, where you at? Jerry, myself, and Rob Dodig, we got some input from kids. Rob especially, I know he left, he wasn't feeling well, but really enjoys working with the middle school kids because he's got a middle school daughter at home, so he really takes the lead. Jerry and I took the lead with the high school students. What we heard loud and clear from the kids at both levels, they mentioned the word relationships a lot, the importance of relationships and building relationships with teachers and administrators on site, and a culture of mutual respect. So that was a big takeaway during those visits, right there. All right, next slide. We had Sarah and April Thompson, Sarah to my right and April in the audience here, presented to CSI, EDAC, and I believe Sarah presented to students at FGCU, and the response was overwhelming in support of the district's move to keeping kids in school and promoting alternatives to suspension. Okay, next slide. All right, we conducted a survey online, and how many respondents did we have? About three thousand?
A little under three thousand.
A little under three thousand respondents, and the question, do you agree with the district's movement to reduce out-of-school suspension by using ATS programs? Fifty-three percent agreed, seventeen percent were neutral. Okay, we kind of anticipated this response. First year, we know that there's some work to do with regards to educating the public on where we're headed with these programs. Okay, next slide. All right, these are offenses that students were recommended for alternative placement to Success Academy, first three quarters for this year. Okay, and if you'll notice, thirty-three percent were recommended for alcohol or drugs. Okay, a big portion of the kids that are there at Success were for those two offenses. Okay, on a more positive note, we realized a thirty-five percent reduction, this, the first three quarters of this year compared to last year. So overall, numbers are down, alcohol marijuana up. Okay, which leads to the next slide. All right, this came from the principals, and we met with Hanley Center, and he presented, Kevin Mase from Hanley presented the Project Yes this morning, and I told the group that he fell from the heavens. I mean, just perfect timing, and they were awarded a $400,000 grant. They've hired eight counselors full-time to work in Lee schools, and so an option that the principals wanted, rather than referring students to the Success Academy for forty-five days for alcohol or drugs, was some type of treatment program. Okay, loud and clear, we heard that from the kids. The kids even said, we want, you know, kids, we asked them, what about kids who bring marijuana to school? What about kids who bring alcohol to school? They really wanted to see that their classmates receive treatment. So a lot of principals wanted this as well. So here comes Hanley, eight full-time counselors available right now, and the wording in the code, the last bullet to the right, principals now have the option. So if a student arrives in the office, let's say, trace marijuana was found in his car or in his backpack, principal has the option to make a recommendation for face-to-face counseling and treatment. Okay, and Kevin talked about it this morning a little bit. It's called teen intervene. So it's three classes, and the last class involves the parent, which to me is powerful. So student gets caught with trace marijuana, rather than being recommended for forty-five days, it's a success, the student and parent can agree to face-to-face counseling with the folks from Hanley, with the parents attending the last session. All right, strictly optional, we're not telling the principals, you must do this, it's up to the principal, every situation is different. We may have students and parents that don't agree to this type of program. Okay, we just wanted to include something in the code this year. There's a lot of principals out there right now that are getting creative and not making recommendations for really minor amounts of marijuana, or a kid that left a can of beer in the back of his pickup truck, that kind of thing. But now it's, you know, hopefully with your approval, it'll be part of the code of conduct to give principals that choice right there. Okay, next slide. This is really the only major change, we got this from the principals, we wanted to raise threat to a level three, threat to a staff member. Okay, we had that as a level two, so they really, you know, they were very vocal about loud and clear, they felt that students who threaten, make direct threats to staff members need to be, needs to be a level three offense. Okay, and I think that's it. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Oh, very, very small. But why aren't these forms online? Are they? These, student emergency and health information, some of the forms that are referred to in the code of conduct, is all that stuff available online?
The majority of the code of conducts are sent electronically.
Oh, they are?
Yes. And are they on our, are they on the Student Services website, I believe? On the main website?
Yeah, okay, all right.
So we, yeah, we really scaled back. I think we only print fifteen thousand copies now. We've made that movement over the past five years. Everybody used to receive a hard copy, everybody.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then what is the restorative agreement plan? What is reverse suspension?
Reverse suspension is, if a student commits an offense that normally would require out-of-school suspension, the parent can now come in and serve the days in school with the child. So let's say a student's referred for insubordination on multiple occasions, the assistant principal decides, you know, you've got three days home, or mom's gonna come to school with you for three days and sit in all your classes. So that's, I think Ms. Patrica sent me a link to that. Small town in Ohio is doing it effectively, and you can think of a middle school kid bringing a parent to school as horrifying. I couldn't remember, I wouldn't want my mother, even in parent pickup at times, so that's what the reverse suspension is.
Okay, thank you. And the restorative agreement?
Restorative agreement? You want to jump on that?
I mean, is this, is this just a descriptor, a name given to the process that we're already engaged in?
Yes.
Okay.
Restorative agreements, similar to a contract.
Yeah.
To restore, each party has agreements, and they agree to attain those.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
I have a question on that. So who actually writes the restorative agreement?
It depends on the situation. You have typically administrator with teacher, parent, student. They could also have a smaller, less formal one between maybe a teacher and a student, and they work on that together, so it depends on the formality and the situation.
Okay, that's what's curious.
Any other comments, questions, board members? Ms. Patrick.
This, my two comments have nothing to do with what you just talked about. Dr. Bohatch, I understand the presentations that you've made, and I appreciate them. My questions have to do with other parts of the code of conduct, specifically cheating and BYOD, bring your own device. Cheating is a level one offense, and I guess that if it's repeated, it could rise to the level of a level two offense.
Correct.
And I think cheating is much more serious than that personally. I know that it can lead to expulsion at the university level, and I was alarmed when I read the code of conduct and saw that it's just a level one offense. That's the first thing. The second thing is the BYOD, I was at a SAC meeting last night where parents raised their concerns about use of cell phones in the classroom, and it wasn't just from disrupting the classroom perspective, it was from a cheating perspective. I guess those devices are being used to cheat in classrooms. So I don't know if we can have a board discussion about these issues, but cheating is, that's about academic integrity, and I think that our academic integrity as a district has to be at the absolute highest level. And I have been lying to my own children, telling them that if they cheat, they can get expelled from school, because I really believed that that was, it just, to me, that's common sense. You cheat, that could be the outcome, so.
Board members, any other comments?
So what is the rationale for level one?
Well, I have a not-good answer for you, that it's always been a level one. So I understand Ms. Patrica's point, and it's a different world we live in.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, with all the FSA testing, I always, I worry about students who cheat and compromise a testing room and compromising a school grade, and it is serious, serious, serious stuff. So, you know, I measure the pleasure of the board, it certainly could be moved to a level two offense, repeated to a level three.
Yep. Ms. LaRiviere.
Yeah, it's different how you handle cheating at the elementary level versus middle and high school.
Right.
You know, and so there, I do believe there needs to be some variance with that, because at the elementary level, we are trying to help mold positive character traits.
Right.
But I do believe that by the time they hit middle and high school, it needs to be definitely much higher than a level one.
That's a good comment.
I do agree with that, so thank you for bringing that up. And I do want, may I also tag on to your comment about, about bring your own device? Was that elementary or secondary level SAC meeting?
Secondary.
Right now, all of those students, especially at a middle, at middle and high school, they don't need to use their own device.
And that's exactly what they said. They said that before the Chromebooks, they understood the academic value of the use of a cellphone in the classroom, but given the fact that they all have devices in their hands, there's no reason for it.
No, there is no reason for it at all, and I have always been of the feeling that I would tell parents, your child has no need for access to a smartphone in elementary or middle school at all, because they don't know how to handle it properly. And I said, so don't waste your money on a smartphone for your child, like get a basic one. But I agree, we do need to address the bring your own device aspect, because they don't need them.
I'm looking to Mr. Demming, who's not far removed from the principal's seat at Riverdale High School. Can you add to that?
You want, come down.
He's, he still thinks he's the principal over at Riverdale, but Dr. Atkins is working on it.
And the only reason that we're bringing that up is the Chromebooks keep them from having to use it.
I hear, I hear you, and I think.
Well, and I would tell you, we're just weighing in, what I've heard from some, some teachers, that, you know, in some schools, some programs do have policies about cell phones that keep them out of the classroom unless they're using it for an academic. And I can tell you that it's sometimes very difficult for teachers to enforce, who have a rule themselves for their classroom when we don't have a policy just right, or a school doesn't have a policy just right, because teacher A allows it, teacher B doesn't.
Yes, exactly.
And that creates a difficulty.
With Chromebooks, it's becoming a lot.
Well, the microphone, not which.
A lot different. But, you know, it's a teacher monitored thing. Every school says, no cell phones in the classroom, and unless it's for academic reasons. Now, there are a lot of academic reasons. Up until this year, when they didn't have Chromebooks, we had a lot of kids, advanced kids, for ninety-nine cents, you could download a TI-55 calculator on your phone instead of having to pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars and buying one, and you'd get all the same results. A lot of kids do that. This is not what those parents are talking about, obviously. A lot of teachers use a Kahoot and a few things like that, which is much easier on a phone than it is on your Chromebook, because you have to call in a number. There are ways around it, but they are, if they're used for academic reasons, I understand. But here's the biggest thing you need to really think about. You're gonna get an uproar from some parents that say you shouldn't have them there. You're gonna get a bigger uproar from parents that say, my kid's gonna have a cellphone because it's a safety thing. I want to know where they are at all times. Because we tried to ban them a couple of years ago at Riverdale, and it, it didn't go over well, because they said, you know, with everything that's going on in the world, I want to be able to get in touch with my son or daughter immediately. So that was the biggest drawback. But teachers that have with-it-ness and know what they're doing can handle their classroom, whether their cell phones are not. Administrators that have with-it-ness can do the same thing. The problem is, not everybody does, and we've got to work to that point where we get everyone to that point. I wish we had no cell phones in the school, but I also see the parents' view that they're scared of something that might happen on the way to school, on the way back. The world's changed in the last, you know, twenty years on, on just simple safety. Social media is a killer for, for high school kids and middle school kids. It's convenient and nice, but it also, you know, everybody's complaining about all these different things they see on TV, well, they see it right on their phone, too.
Exactly.
And we need to really think hard on how we want to go with that, but I do want to tell you, teachers that have with-it-ness, administrators that have with-it-ness can, this old Madeleine Duran thing from years ago that.
Died too soon.
Yes, exactly, that, those teachers and administrators that have that are not having problems with it. But unfortunately, it's not that way across the board. So we either have to make it across, that way across the board, or come up with a policy. And that's totally up to you to decide. I'm glad that's your choice, not mine, but parents will, there will be a huge kickback if we try and ban phones from the schools.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Ms. Fisher had her hand up, and then I'll come back.
Oh, I was just gonna go back to the cheating and the level one offense, and I'll piggyback on what Mrs. LaRiviere said. First of all, we have to look at the definition of cheating, and at elementary level, we are now in a, in a mode where we are teaching our standards by encouraging team and group projects, and, you know, you have to look at the subjectivity of accusing someone of cheating. So I might lose my place, and I might look over at Melissa's agenda to see where we are. So is that cheating? I mean, and if kids are supposed to cooperate, and developmentally, there has to be a certain level of development before. It is cheating by its definition in our code of conduct, so I think we have to be a little bit careful about how much attention we give to that, especially at those primary levels. And then, of course, on testing or using devices to get information to answer tests at the secondary level, well, you know, I mean, I would be open to discussion for that, but after many years of teaching parenting classes and doing staff development, I will say that what you give attention to, you're gonna get more of.
Thank you. Good comments. Mr. Toiber.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I, I think there's two separate issues. One is technology, you know, in two thousand and eight, there was a study that the high school students were watching, you know, the basketball game, the NCAA finals, texting two of their friends and speaking on the phone, all at the same time. And people say it's multitasking, and there's no such thing, and they prove, you know, medically, there's no such thing as multitasking, but it's the ability to switch from task to task so much quicker, and that's just where we are. That's our, the generations that we have. And I remember way back in the day, Dr. Browder was at Fort Myers High, he just didn't even want the payphone at the end of the hallway, and he said, well, put it there, and it didn't last very long, and he ripped it out, because, you know, people are gonna, you know, use, and then it was the phones, you know, people are gonna cheat with the phones, and it's not about, there's always gonna be a way, whether they use it right on their hands or they, you know, so we can't fault, you know, don't shoot the messenger as far as the technology. You know, we can't expect our, our students to be running at a technology rate, you know, through their entire lives, and then go into slow mode when they go through our doors and put everything on the side. That's just, number one, it's not academically efficient, and number two is, that's just not, they're not wired that way, and we're really kind of defeating our purpose. So I think technology needs to be embraced where it is, I mean, and we have to get off our dinosaur horses and, and figure out how to meet them where they are, and I think that our, our teachers, like you said, the good ones that are with it, get it, and employ it and use it. So I'm not a proponent at all for restricting any technology, what they use and how they use it, we just have to be smart enough and learn to learn with them and be able to develop it. And the same token is, I agree with Ms. Patrica, there's cheating, and I agree with Ms. Fisher, too. There's, you know, cheating is not tolerated, period, and that is, there is no, there's no gray area there. You just, you don't, you know, if you cheat, and we have to decide what cheating is, and I think Ms. Fisher made a good point, you know, I think there should be severe repercussions if you cheat, it's not tolerated, and you're done. And that's, in college, that's the way it is. If you cheat, you're, you're done. You know, we can't be done at a high school, but there should be that type of severity, so they learn that lesson, that that's one of the lines you don't cross. Now, in that, we also want to make sure we embrace collaborative learning, because in today's world, to be able to work collaboratively and in groups, and we've noticed that with Trey, with his software fishbowl and so on, that is a success of today's worker, that if you can't work in a group and create and be able to share ideas and do that, no matter how smart you are, you're not gonna succeed. So we have to be very careful, too, with our definition. So in sum, I just, I just want to get on my, both my suitboxes to say that, you know, technology is there. I don't get what my daughter does with her Snapchats and all the things that they do, but that's what they do, and they do it very, very well, and it's much easier, you know, I think our code of conduct, you know, if you ask a student, what time is it, they're not gonna look at their watch, they don't wear watches, they're gonna pull out their cellphone and look at the cellphone. When they want to do homework, they're gonna snap a picture of the homework. Why wouldn't they? That's what's, how they function and efficiently function. So we have to be able to allow them to do that, to give them a referral for pulling out their cellphone when it serves a functional purpose, you know, that's what, you know, we just have to be very careful. So, so that's where I'm at. I support Ms. Patrica and Ms. Fisher as far as the cheating, but I think technology needs to be very, very cautiously reviewed if we're gonna put in some type of procedures against that.
Mr. Martin.
Yes, just to provide a clear understanding of your options with respect to the cellphone issue, because there are a couple of statements made about cell phones not being in the classroom. You actually have Florida statute that addresses this issue, addresses the code of student conduct, and establishes required provisions for that code, one of which is a provision stating that a student may possess a wireless communications device while the student is on school property or in attendance at the school function. It then goes on to say that the school board then establishes rules with respect to the use of that, that device while on school property, while at school, but possession is required by the statute, the ability to possess.
Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, I wasn't clear. I don't think we should be expelling K through five students, by any stretch of any imagination. And I do think that your concerns regarding what's cheating, what's not cheating, would all be fleshed out in an investigative process. That's part of the expulsion process as listed in the student code of con, student code of conduct. So I don't think we're dealing with students who look over at a piece of paper to see where they are and get caught up. I'm suggesting that it be an option for the most serious offenses, where an investigation finds that the student did actually do that, and we, we had the result of one of those earlier today, so.
We, can I interject? We could leave at the elementary level, shooting as a level one, and then six, twelve, go level two.
Well, we could, we could do level one with repeated offenses up to two, K through five, and then maybe level, I don't know, if we start at a level two for six through twelve, with the possibility for a level three. That, that's what I would feel.
That I'm hearing.
More comfortable with.
Board members, you okay with that?
And I didn't read your definitions for that, but I think there was some interest here in making sure we do the best job that we can in defining what cheating is at those levels. So I think the direction is to go back to the drawing board on, on that part and bring us back another recommendation. Ms. Fisher?
And there are definitions for each one of the offenses in the code of conduct. So cheating says the inappropriate and deliberate distribution or use of an electronic device, information, notes, material, or work of another person in the completion of an academic exam, test, or assignment in an online or traditional course to include plagiarism. So there's a specific definition.
Yeah, and maybe that, I mean, maybe they still can review that.
Right.
And make sure that at each of the levels, it meets what we're talking about in terms of our expectations for students. From the technology standpoint, I don't know that there's any further follow-up needed. Is that, is that true? Board members, you okay with that? All right.
We could redefine cheating. I'll bring it back to you in two weeks. It's a, it's not a Cessar incident, so we could certainly do that.
And anything else in your presentation, Mr. Bohatch?
Well, we've got this handsome gentleman to my left.
And now we move on to Mr. Mannen.
Good afternoon, board members. Mr. Martin, bringing to you today the adult code of conduct. I do not have a PowerPoint in the interest of time and deference to your schedule that I know you guys are under today, but this was part of your package, so I was just gonna brief by exception to a couple of the changes, nothing of the mundane sort like dates and all, but the more major things. This process was started back in February on all three campuses and with the adult career education, because this adult code of conduct covers all those aspects of our system. It was worked out at the individual school levels and then brought together as a commit, as a whole in April over the actual spring break to do the work on the updates for this. We did align with Vision 2020, that's onside the front cover. Moving over to pages four through, excuse me, pages four, we removed the disciplinary probation, because we did not use it at all this year, and it seems to be repetitive with disciplinary warnings, so we removed that from the document. It seems to be repetitive with disciplinary warnings, so we removed that from the, uh, the document. As you look through pages five through 10, what you'll notice is that we've made some small tweaks and changes on some of the consequences to bring it more into align with some of the practices we experienced this year, because this was our first year with an adult code of conduct, and also something that would be a little bit more flexibility given to the administrators in dealing with the situations. The last page, page 12, is perhaps the most extensive change, and it is in regards to adding language, in regards to a student being withdrawn from one of the technical centers, having to wait a period of two years as a beginning standard before they can re-enroll in another campus, although that is subject to the director's review at the respective colleges. Your questions?
Board members? Okay, it's a go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we will now move to, was there anything else, Dr. Atkins, in relation to these? We'll now move to public comment. Mr. Martin?
Score policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this briefing meeting agenda. The time per speaker is three minutes.
Is there anybody in the audience on your left or on your right that would like to speak? All right, we shall move on then to board member comments, and we'll start with Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. I attended the Cape Coral Mayor's Scholarship Banquet last Thursday, and 25 scholarships of $1,500 each were awarded to some of our bright and shining Cape Coral High School students. Cape Coral as the city, uh, high school students. We had 72 applications this year, which set a record, and we continue to have amazing community and sponsorship support. Last night, I had an opportunity to be at the Cape Coral Chamber Excellence in Education Awards, where students and teachers from all of the Cape Schools, uh, thank you, Cape Coral Chamber, were recognized, and $1,000 scholarships were awarded to all of the seniors. Dr. Pruitt was the keynote speaker, and she delivered a strong message. And the Cape Coral Breeze, who is a consistent sponsor to our educational process in Cape Coral and does a weekly What's Cool in Schools in their newspaper, um, had some words to say. They continue to support and, and donate to our students. And their comment was that our story is their story. So we really appreciate, um, what they do to keep going. On another happy note, Saturday morning at 7:30, I was at Cape Coral High School with the Key Club and Keepley County Beautiful and other business and vol, um, community volunteers planting 70 trees, which is the first phase of a beautification, a student-designed beautification process. And the, um, Keepley County Beautiful reviewed 12 different sites, and Cape Coral High School was the number-one selection. So we're very proud of the work they do. I do wanna comment that, um, I was disappointed that there was no media there, because we've had media all over our kids in Cape Coral lately, especially if they're like prowling around cars and stuff. So when there were 150 high school students early on a Saturday morning digging holes, carrying buckets, laying mulch, and nobody was there, I was disappointed. That was just a personal aside. The Drug Free Coalition held a prevention family night at Tice Elementary, and they had an amazing turnout, and they were able to provide information to children and their families. They continue to work on establishing Students Against Destructive Decision Clubs and presenting prevention activities at Boys and Girls Clubs and our after-school programs. I had an opportunity to visit Cape Coral Tech College with a community member, I think, who had mentioned to Mrs. Morgan that we ought to have a, a tech college in, in Cape Coral. So he, we took him on his tour and gave him lunch, and he was extremely impressed with the programs and the, um, interaction that he was able to have with the teachers and students. I attended CSI Committee on Monday night, and, um, they have two final recommendations this year, that they are very much in favor of the alternatives to suspension and the restorative justice program, and that they advocate for ongoing training for our staffs, staff members. And they also recommend that we establish consistent 360-degree evaluations of administrators by school staff, and they feel that that will impact the climate, the culture, and teacher retention. That we'll be having our last meeting on May 15th. This morning at Project Yes, which is an ad hoc committee in this community, that was initiated in response to the training that we took about stopping the school-to-prison pipeline, and has been a, a supporter of the whole restorative justice practices and alternatives to suspension. They met, and the Hanley Center, as Mr., Dr. Bohatch mentioned, are providing in 10 of our schools, um, prevention and intervention programs for those students who are, uh, impacted by substance abuse themselves, or whose families are involved in that. And they also do, um, they have eight full-time counselors now who are available to our students to help with coping skills, uh, senior, senior high school problems. And they also provide online free parenting classes, Parenting Wisely. So they had gotten a $400,000 grant, which is renewable without reapplication annually. So there's money there, and we hope to continue to be able to, um, benefit, have our kids benefit from their services. Just a brief legislative a, update. As the session winds down, there are some indications that an extension of the session may happen. So it is scheduled to conclude on Friday, May 5th. Information regarding the budget is not readily available, as the legislature has not yet released allocations to districts. However, what appears to have been agreed upon is a $27 per student increase in the FEFP. That actually is less than 1%. Similarly, the PICO funding is lackluster. The allocation statewide for district schools is six, statewide, is $69 million for renovations, repairs, and maintenance, and $69 million has also been allocated for charter schools. The issue of sharing capital outlay funds with charter schools continues to surface. However, it's not known at this time whether or not that language mandating the sharing will be included in the final legislation. If it were, it would be an $8.3 million loss to the district for fiscal year 2018. Unfortunately, our Grow Your Own bill was not included in the final budget proposals, so we will look ahead to trying again next year. It usually takes maybe three or four years. We are following the legislation closely that would require the district to share Title I funding for high-poverty schools with the charter schools. This legislation would significantly impact our Title I schools, and our lobbyists and others believes, believe that they are making progress toward defeating this proposal. So we'll continue to watch and keep our fingers crossed. Two other issues of note that appear to be headed towards passage include a, the $200 million for Schools of Hope, which would permit high-performing charters to locate within a five-mile radius of D or F district schools. And then also, the Best and Brightest Teachers Scholarship Fund appears to be headed for renewal with a significant increase in funding from $49 million to over $200 million. This would permit teachers with high test scores when they were in college to receive up to a $10,000 bonus from the state. And that is all I have right now, except to say thank you to staff. Oh, I have one more thing. I had a little, uh, review on the Standards for Excellence, and I know that a lot of work and a lot of time went into this. And, um, when I was able to look at the finished product, I thought, wow, that looks easy. I can understand that it looks doable, and I think it won't overwhelm our teachers, and it'll be more manageable, and maybe this, too, will help with retention. So that's all I have, and thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Giavennelli. Ms. Patrica?
I have a few things. I spoke with, uh, I was put in touch with a woman named Janet Boyle, who is the Executive Director of Excellence and Leadership of Learning at the University of Indianapolis. And she talked to me a lot about career and technical education. She turned me on to the Far San Juan-Alamo School District on the Mexican border, and their demographics are very similar to ours. They went from a 50% graduation rate to over 90%. Dr. Atkins and I have talked about that, and it's, um, it's really cool what they're doing down there. You guys know that I had a phone meeting with Ken Clifford from Francis Rooney's office, and I wanna apologize to you face-to-face about not having shared my earlier memo with you when I met with Rooney, with Congressman Rooney. I just didn't know as a new board member that that's what I was supposed to do. So I'm sorry to you guys for not sharing that earlier. I do wanna point out that Brian Mangan and Rita Davis were very, very, very helpful to me in gathering information for that conversation, and I was blown away by how much they know and how much they were able to share with me. And I was also very impressed to see that, like transportation with Mr. Cody in the back there, Rita is looking for ways to generate income for the school district. This has been an eye-opener for me as a new school board member. I didn't realize, I thought all we did was spend money. I didn't realize we actually tried to generate income. So when I see that in pockets throughout the district, it makes me really happy. This might sound counterintuitive to you, but I did visit Pine Woods Elementary School as a board member. Visiting Pine Woods as a board member gave me a different perspective, and I also believe that there's staff there that deserve some recognition. I have to share with you a story. I, um, left the state of New York in large part because the public schools were failing my children. And I came to, um, Lee County Schools. I did a lot of research on the schools. I specifically chose Lee County because of the schools. But I was very hesitant, and I did not have faith in public education when I arrived here. It took Leslie and her staff about six months to make me positive, and probably a full school year to completely turn me around. I did a 180 on public schools because of Ms. Gunderson and her staff. Takeaways from the, uh, tour, our capital needs are very evident at Pine Woods. They're busting at the seams. They are very, very excited about the improved learning, uh, I'm sorry, reading curriculum that we'll be using next year. I know that there, there's been some talk about inclusion in the district and how it's being done in some places well, as opposed to other places. They're doing it very well at Pine Woods. They have villages that are 30% ESE students, 70% Gen Ed students. The fourth-grade village in particular has a mother-daughter teaching team. So there are, um, two teachers, is it two teachers or three teachers? There's three teachers and a para in each one of those village classrooms. And the village classrooms are two classrooms combined. I went into a fifth-grade village classroom with Ms. Hanks, Debeck, Sanderson, and Brochen, and Ms. Latour, who I worked with as a para at Pine Woods, was in there as well. And they were reenacting, uh, the American Revolution. And the thing that Ms. Hanks, Debeck said over and over and over again was, "You guys are awesome." And that's a quote. That's what the teacher said over and over again. When she would ask a question and a bunch of the students were engaged, she just kept saying, "You are awesome." And that's, that's an environment in which I would wanna learn. Pat Radley is the building supervisor over there, also known as Mr. Wonderful. That is quite honestly his nickname. I had to ask the principal what his real name is, because I have called him Mr. Wonderful since I met him. Courtney Sakowski is the PTO president over there. She also works at FGCU, and she has brought more than 100 FGCU students onto that campus to volunteer this year alone. So she's done an amazing job, and I, uh, my final takeaway is that Leslie Gunderson, as the principal, remains one of the best leaders I've ever seen in any organization. She is dynamic and fantastic. Moving on, I did send, uh, Ms. Fisher a, a memo requesting a workshop on our long-term strategic plan. I believe that we, as a board, should be looking five, 10 years down the road. Right now, we're up to, we go through to 2020. And I'm a work-against-deadline kinda girl, and 2020 feels like tomorrow to me, given how slowly things work in government. So I'd like us all to be thinking about that as a possibility. I visited Dunbar. Wow, a hidden gem right there in the middle of Dunbar is what Dunbar High School is. Mr. Burnside has some very unique hiring and retention techniques. He, he and Matthew Miller, the assistant principal, um, were there for my entire tour. The facility is absolutely gorgeous. The International Academy was very impressive. The class that I was in was incredibly small, because they'd been able to move several of the students out of that International Academy into regular classrooms. And he said that at the beginning of the year, those classes are much, much bigger. The rigorous academic programs really, really blew me away. I just had no idea they were there. I don't know why I had no idea they were there, because Dunbar is as available to me as, as any other school in the district. Very, very high expectations with regard to behavior are ingrained in that school. And as, uh, Mr. Bohatch said earlier, it's an atmosphere of mutual respect. If the students respect the teachers and the administrators, the administrators respect the students, you're gonna get good behavior. And, and it's just, he has set a very high bar over there, and the students are, are rising to it. And, um, I guess my final criticism is for, um, Dr. Atkins to give me too many choices as a parent. Now I don't know where I'm gonna send my kids for high school, because there are so many very, very good choices for us here in the district. I went to see Pippen at Astero High School, and what struck me about that was there was a very long, not long, loud, strong contingent of students in the audience cheering for their friends onstage. It wasn't disrespectful, it wasn't disruptive, it was always done at the correct time. But to see that kinda student support was, like, not at a basketball game, was, was very cool to me. I visited the jail, which was, um, really sad. Sheriff Scott is doing a great job, as we all know. The jail was very bright and very clean and absolutely appropriate for the people who are housed there. Jerry McNulty was my guide for the day. He brought me all over Fort Myers, showing me the various things that they do. But this was probably the most impactful experience I've had as a board member. I just, I just left there thinking, we cannot allow even one of our students to end up in this system. And it was hard. It was really, it was really, really hard. So I guess the impression I'm left with there is that I don't know the answers. We, as a district, don't know the answers, but I am absolutely committed to finding the answers. And the responsibility is not ours alone. I, as a board member, need to do a better job of working with my fellow elected officials in the area. Florida ranks 49th for spending on mental health, and I'm trying to track down the information on where Lee County ranks in the state of Florida, um, so that we can do a better job. It's, it's not the county commissioner's fault. They have 9,000 things on their plate. They, they have to worry about infrastructure and water quality and everything that they deal with. We're just one issue for them. So I need to do a better job of helping them to understand the importance of their spending and how that impacts our kids. So what, we're around $7,400 per student right now that we spend, right? Is it around $7,400? So to educate a child for 180 days costs us about $7, $7,400 in Lee County. To house a student or an individual in jail for 180 days costs $19,000-plus dollars. So, I mean, this is just, this is beyond the horrible thought of a student living in jail. This is economic. We need to do a better job of preparing our kids to, to not go that route. And I, like I said, I don't know the answers, but I'm absolutely, absolutely committed to finding those answers. I've spoken with Dr. Bohatch. He is going to, um, give me a tour of our DJJ schools and facilities so that I can have a better feel for what we here in the district are doing, and hopefully that will, um, will allow me to find a few more answers. Moving on, I went to the Planning and Zoning Committee at the Village of Astero with Mark Mora. Where is he? He, there he is. He, as usual, hit it out of the park with his presentation. I just kinda stood there and showed, I was there to show my support as a board member for a collaborative relationship with the Village of Astero. I thought that, that went pretty well. I met with the Stony Brook Men's Group to tell them what we've been doing here at the district. They were very happy with our desire to increase career and technical education opportunities for our students. I went yet again to Astero High School for the Character Education Digital Design Competition. Another Astero High School student won. Norm Haybor, who is the teacher who produces all of those winning students, was overwhelmed yet again that his student had won. I'm sure Kathleen's gonna talk a little bit about the academic signing day at South Fort Myers High School, which was outstanding, and Kathleen will probably also talk about the stamped luncheon that we attended today. That's it. I don't want you to have to listen to me anymore.
That was delightful. Thank you. Mr. Toiber?
I have no comments.
Ms. LaRiviere?
Thank you. I just want to say what an exciting district advisory council meeting we had two weeks ago. It was, I, I had forewarned, and I suggested that we might want to have public comment cards. However, there wasn't a clear understanding of what to do with those public comment cards. But we've got that ironed out for the next time. There was quite a bit of public comment that did take up a great deal of the time. As kudos, and I'm having a brain freeze, to Mr. Mora and Mr., I know, the last name is not coming to me.
Morgan.
Thank you.
Greg.
Greg Martin, thank you. I hate it when I do that. Did a really great job with their presentation. And I, I just want you to know how much we appreciate that. And our curriculum committee, committee wound up, though, it wound up putting them, because we had so much public comment that we were not prepared for, allowed little time, their time got cut short on sharing the ELA standards. But at our executive DAC meeting, we came up with a plan, so that will be taken care of in the fall when we talk about science and math. Do the Right Thing, as usual, was wonderful. I'm constantly amazed at what our kids do. And Ms. Morgan also joined me at that, and it was, it was, it was great. And then after that, I had the opportunity to have a meeting with a former student, who is now my boss, because he votes for me, so he's my boss. And we were addressing his concerns regarding student assignment and other issues. And we, we went on from there. But it's really scary, because all of these former students are parents with kids in schools. And I feel very old as I, as I meet with them. But it's also a joy. It's also a joy. I had the pleasure of attending the Film Festival on Friday evening. Ms. Morgan was also there, and I'm not going to speak much about that. But it was, besides the fact that it was wonderful and the kids absolutely, kudos to, Suncoast Credit Union again came through, and they provided this beautiful background display for all of their photo shots. And they came up, and they were dressed to the hilt and the nines, and they were striking the poses from elementary through high school. It was wonderful. Thank you to Teraz and Todd Everly for scheduling a tour yesterday at the Galasano Children's Hospital. We got to tour that along with our staff from the college, technical colleges, were also there, who were part of our nursing program that were, that were there. And just an amazing place. Ms. Patrikka also was part of that group. And, boy, if you haven't, if you haven't, just wait till you see that. It is absolutely amazing. Everything, a concept that was set. Everything was built around and designed around and planned around the child and the parent. And it just made me think about everything that we do within the school district, making sure that all that we do is built around and designed around the child and the parent and the families.
Pam, can I, can I just add to that and say, I'm sorry, I forgot to bring that up during my report, but the, the teacher with the long blonde hair, do you remember her name?
Oh, I, from Cape, from, she's from Cape Coral. Carol Tucker, that's it. That's the name.
Every single question she asked was pointed and from the perspective of a student. I mean, she was really laser focused on, "How can this new facility help me help my students become better at what they do?" And also, you mentioned Suncoast. I don't have any idea how they make any profit at all.
I, I don't either.
They are so generous with our school district. Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's, that's perfectly, I love having conversations, so that's not a problem. And then again, we also had the pleasure of attending Stamp prior to coming here today to see our students that sometimes, we have students that sometimes could have fallen through the cracks. And through this program that, let Ms. Morgan speak more about it, because she's been very involved with helping it grow to where it is. And hopefully, we will see more people involved in seeing it grow. This is for, for board members and governance team. I, per, brain freeze. Per Ms. Fisher's request, I did work with Tina Pinkerson. We will need three more days of master board training, five hours each. That way, instead of that, to make up for the time that we are going to miss by not doing the two-day. So taking that, I sat down with Ms. Sanders to coordinate and look around Dr. Atkins' calendar. And keeping in mind words that several of you have mentioned about would prefer workshops not necessarily being on the same week that we have a board meeting, and days that she thought might be conducive, we worked around Dr. Atkins' calendar of his availability. And so we will be having some dates that will be coming out to you. Working around his calendar, it was proposed that the time slot be from 10:00 to 3:30, and that we do a working lunch. Those dates been provided to Tina Pinkerson for her to put out to her PD team, for those who will be working with us, see what dates are open for them. And then you will be given all of those dates. What the request is going to be, please indicate, you will literally just check each date that, "Oh, I could do this, I could do this, I could do this." Don't limit it to just three, or whatever. Put out, just check every single date that you think, okay, I can, I'm able to work it out to be here on that date. So when you receive that, which will be later this week, please try to get that back as soon as possible to Ms. Johnson, so that we are able to then go forward and, and do some planning. Because there are other workshops that we need to schedule, or workshop days that may include several things on the agenda and not just one. So then that will make it easier for Ms. Fisher and Dr. Atkins to coordinate any of the other follow-up workshops that are requested. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Morgan.
Just want you to know, Chris, that I'm doing Astero High School tomorrow morning, because they got the Digital Design Award for me.
I know, I'm going to.
Oh, you are going to, then I don't have to go?
We'll both go.
With respect, thank you, two things. First of all, thank you for sharing the correspondence you had with Congressman Rooney and Ken?
Clifford.
The work you put in and your efforts to engage these people, in my opinion, are awesome. And, and I, I just, that's, that's fantastic. Thank you for sharing your email about the workshop. I think we need to do our master board training first. We may, in fact, touch on some of the things that you want to talk about in that process. So I personally would like to see us move as quickly as we can through the master board training, and then focus on how we want to do, schedule workshop topics and, and whatever going forward. So, thank you. Ms. Fisher mentioned the project, yes. I thought it was interesting. Judge Seals said this morning that four years ago, or three years ago, he approached Pete Bohatch and said, "We have to do something with out-of-school suspension." Got all of the community together to work on this project. And simultaneously, the district was really tackling that as we were working. And so the group basically agreed this morning that although it was great to have us brought all together for that topic, we needed to move on. And then the second topic that came up as a result of a survey Judge Seals did for today's meeting was moving alcohol and substance abuse out of ALC back into the high schools where appropriate. And of course, Dr. Bohatch came in and talked about the Handley Foundation. So I think people in the community who were sitting there representing the various not-for-profit groups and, and public agencies were pretty impressed at the fact that things seem to be coming together with respect to the community supporting student services in a way that we cannot. And so I think they pretty much agreed they want to continue as an ad hoc committee, looking for those things where there has not been a resolution, where the community may be able to support the school district. So that was, that was a great meeting. Let's see. And then, yeah, the best part of the end of the school year for us is, maybe not for our spouses, but for us, is all the end-of-school ceremonies. So, just to go through the list. First of all, South Fort Myers High had an academic signing celebration on Friday. And I got to tell you, it was just really exciting. We, we, we highlight student athletes. We hang their pictures on the wall. We, we acknowledge them for this and that. And I, and I personally don't feel that we do enough for the academic side. And to me, this was just a great start. One school piloting an opportunity to showcase for younger students, those who are graduating, and the kinds of choices they make. And it's not just about going to college. It's about going to technical college. It's about going to community college. It's about going into the service. It's about making it the whole way through with a goal, and then having something when you come out. So it was, it was just awesome. And then, of course, the foundation came through with a $10,000 scholarship.
What did we call, what was, what did you call that? A reveal.
They had, they had a reveal for a $10,000 scholarship to FSW. And, you know, just very emotional morning. And they, actually, I think they built the entire day around celebrating academic achievement and celebrating students who have worked hard. So that was great. And then, let's see, so I did that one. Film Festival, a little long for, I think, K-5 kids. We started at 6:30. We, the doors opened at 6:30. We ended at 10:00. I think it was a fabulous celebration. I think we need to think a little bit about the timing, particularly for some of the younger kids. But I, I wouldn't change it in any other way, because clearly, again, we're celebrating kids who are doing work and the, and the performing, not performing, the fine arts, the graphics, and that kind of thing. And, and it is time that we start recognizing the different intelligences and how they play out in our school system. I went to Hill Meyer Tremont last night. Four, $20,000 scholarships were handed out to student athletes. I don't think there was a student athlete with a GPA below 4.8. Just amazing, some of the situations that these students come from, and they, they work with a mentor, they get on a team, and they find that support that we were talking about earlier, that makes it possible for them to achieve their goals. I know from the foundation scholarship to FSW and the scholarships last night, there are kids who would not be going to college without these scholarships. And these are kids with enormous potential. And they are kids who may very well come back to the community. Take Stock in Children today. The whole idea behind Take Stock was that there simply was not enough program access, not for Take Stock, for Stamp. There was not enough program access for Take Stock for the number of kids who, who needed it and were interested in it. And so John Felzenthal from Benita talked Marshall into starting the Stamp Program, which is really more about mentoring and, and doing things like the FAFSA. But it turns out that all of the students recognized today, and this was their first graduating class, every one of them has a plan to go to either college, technical college, well, it's college or technical college, and one community college. And that wasn't really the goal. The goal was to get these kids through school and sort of with some idea of what their future would be. And they're all, as it turns out, going on. So, let's see, what else? Did I hit all the things that Hill Meyer Tremont? I think I've got, yeah, I think I've got them all. So this is the fun part of the job, going out and watching other people in the community give our students, recognize our students, and provide for them the opportunity to move on beyond Lee County. So, thank you.
And thank you. Mr. Martin?
Yes, Dr. Cocke, board members, I do have a school law minute today. Continuing with parliamentary procedure, the subject I wanted to address today is the process for dividing the main motion. The tool you use for that purpose is the motion to divide. A motion to divide is used when you wish to vote differently with respect to separate components of a motion, or need to abstain as to a component of a motion. A motion to divide requires a second and majority vote. It is not debatable. That is, when you have a motion to divide with a second, you immediately go to the vote. There is no discussion on the motion to divide. If the issue to be divided is in the consent agenda, it must first be polled when the chair makes requests for polls from the consent agenda. And then there must be a motion to approve the recommendation from the superintendent, because the item divided is the motion, it's not the recommendation. So just to give you an example of when a motion to divide might be used, let's say that you have a recommendation for a point of, appointment of two members to an advisory committee. You wish to have a vote in favor of Member A, but not Member B. After the item is removed from the consent agenda, and there is a motion to approve the recommendation, and the next step would be for there to be a motion to divide by separating out the appointment of Member B. Now, at that point, after the motion to divide passes, you have two separate motions. You go back to the motion to appoint Board Point Member A with discussion and a vote, and then the motion to appoint Member B with discussion and a vote. That's the motion to divide. That's all I have today.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Dr. Atkins?
No comments, other than say that we have a workshop that will precede this briefing, or follow this briefing, I should say. If we run out of time there, we also built in a little for the 16th, where I can work with Mrs. Fisher to schedule additional time, because we wanted to make sure we had ample opportunity for you to have full discussion about the budget and other issues that we're bringing forward.
Thank you. So with that, we will adjourn and take a five to 10-minute break. Ms. Fisher?
I just have two quick things for the good of the order. I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I did receive Mrs. Patrikka, your request for the workshopping on the strategic plan ongoing. And I did discuss that with Dr. Atkins, and he's going to make a brief comment about that at this.
Well, the, the comment is, we do have in-board policy 1.07. It does address the strategic plan. Strategic plan in that policy is the school district of Lee County shall maintain a three-year district strategic plan, which will be used by the superintendent of the school board as a guide for educational, financial, and operating decision-making. We do bring that to the board a couple times a year for an update. And so we are planning to do that actually in July. And it is, there is an automatic addition of a year after each one of those updates. So that's a piece of policy that we just need to consider as we're talking about, you know, a longer-term approach that you currently have in policy, a three-year that adds automatically. And Ms. Patrikka, when you and I talked about this as well, I did not remember that provision in the policy, but we worked with Dr. Carlin, who's, who's kind of responsible, or is responsible, kind of making sure that we get those updates to the board. And we're aware that we do have that policy to consider as it relates to this workshop request.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Fisher?
I, I'll hold it for later. Yes, thank you.
Anybody else for the good of the order? If not, this briefing meeting is adjourned. Five to 10 amendment break.